Should pull up the Valley Animal Department. Two hundred, two hundred and twenty million dollar budget, nobody shows, but Valley Animal. Oh, we got Howard, Howard's coming, there he is.
All right.
We heard he got animal, really well. I just thought I'd add some comedy in this. Maybe a decade ago, that wasn't funny. I wasn't here a decade ago. Good evening, everyone. Just a weird entrance.
of the Whole to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Mathie?
Here.
Alderman Sage?
Here.
Alderman Mulhambway?
Here.
Alderman Burgess?
Here.
Alderman Painter?
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Black?
Here.
Alderman Bray?
Here.
Yeah, and I'm here.
Mayor Renner, goodness.
I wonder if at this point, if we could have a motion to permit Alderwoman Bray to participate virtually. Moved by Alderwoman Halman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Mathie?
Yes.
Alderman Sage?
Yes.
Alderman Mulhambway?
Yes.
Alderman Burgess?
Yes.
Alderman Painter?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Black?
Yes.
Alderman Halman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Kim, you there, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, perfectly, are you doing okay?
Doing well.
Great.
Sorry to be away on business, but glad I could participate.
Great, I'm glad you're here, thank you. At this point, we have public comment, and we have one person who signed up for public comment, who is no stranger to public comment, and that is Gary Lambert.
I'm assuming since I'm the only one here, I get thirty minutes to talk. I heard the buzzer. Just a couple of quick comments. In all the budgeting sessions that I've sat in on, both of the city council and their planning Saturday meetings and such, a few years ago, we had the survey that was sent Infrastructure has only been ranked second to public safety. I think that still hasn't changed. Just looking at a couple of the handouts for today, Jim's going to go into it later, but, you know, as I've mentioned many times before, and you're all well aware of it, the red general fund, funding for the road stops in 2014. I sat in on all those meetings, half the people here did. My best recollection, and Jim can correct me when he gets up, my understanding that was to be a supplement, to get us over the hump. And as we all knew, that ran out in four years. Shows it pretty well here. Somewhere in here, we got a slanting line showing the condition of the roads. It's declining, in spite of those tax increases. Just a couple other observations. We do have a twenty million surplus now. Our stated goal, I don't know if it was in a resolution form or what, it was ten to fifteen percent. But I see the lobbying here, hey, we need to raise that to twenty or twenty-five percent. I'm just waiting for that resolution to come. Be able to fill it pretty easy, since none of the red is going out to fix the roads. And maybe it's out there already, but it says, fund balances are for emergency situations and one-time needs such as one-and-done capital projects. My concern is, is that becomes another slush fund for unbudgeted projects. Now I'm going to change hats a little bit, I gotta defend the mayor.
Call Ripley's. Sorry.
Exclamation point. In some circles, he's been called taxing Terry. I don't believe that. I can't recall a single time when Terry has voted in favor of a tax increase. Maybe he has, but I don't recall it. What I do recall is the nine councilmen, they are the ones that are responsible for the tax increases. That responsibility lies solely on each of you for any future increases. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move right along to consideration of approving committee of the whole meeting minutes from February eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, as requested by the city clerk department. And the recommendation is that the reading of the minutes be dispensed, and that the minutes be approved as printed. Is there a motion to that effect, or there are questions or comments or amendments?
I make that motion, Mayor, to approve.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Halman. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? I'm assuming that one has to be roll call. Or wait, can we do, we can do that electronically, okay, sorry. After I turn it on. Alderwoman Bray? How do you vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. The motion carries nine to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. We move right along to a review of revenues collected and expenditures related to the motor fuel tax, approved in two thousand and fourteen as a request for the Bloomington City Council. And again, this is a presentation and discussion only, there are known actions, of course, to be taken this evening. We're going to start with an overview by our city manager and Mr. Karch. And as was alluded to in, in public comment, we did have, and we can, this can certainly come out, not just from me, but from other council members, we did have somewhere around four million dollars in the general fund that was allocated to streets. We also had a ten million dollar street resurfacing bond, that instead of fifteen years, which is what we could have done, we did it in ten, but some of that money was replaced in the budget crunch of two thousand and fourteen, and then, you know, we're down to earmarked funds. And then, so that's much of what we can talk about. And so I think the public deserves an answer to those kinds of questions as we move forward on this, but I'd also ask the council, if we're not, I mean, regardless of legacy costs, we can always say, somebody should have done this twenty-five years ago, somebody should have done this ten years ago, somebody should have done this five years ago. Streets don't pay themselves, so if it's not going to be this, then what is it? So we deserve, our constituents deserve answers. If it's not a four cent a gallon gas tax, or whatever it is, if it's a reallocation of money, then what is it? And I think we need answers to those questions over the next couple of weeks, at the most. So I'm going to go ahead and turn that over to Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. To piggyback off of some of the comments that the mayor just did make, I feel that staff was directed to make this presentation tonight. And then the next one, that we'll see here in a few minutes. But there's a number of things that I want to share, not to steal any of Public Works Director Jim Karch's thunder, if you will, it's just to emphasize exactly what we're talking about tonight. One thing that you'll notice up on the slide, you see asphalt and concrete, you don't see the word roads, because we're talking about asphalt and concrete projects that also include sidewalks. There's a number of things that I'm going to assume, and it can be dangerous to assume, that some of this has been clearly communicated to the council, and more so the community, but still the questions hang out there. So this is not about any future funding in the form of the locomotive fuel tax that we've talked about. This is entirely a presentation talking about how we have funded, what we have done with the, the public dollars on asphalt and concrete projects since two thousand and fourteen. And why did I pick two thousand and fourteen? The significance of that is that's when the locomotive fuel tax, the four cents that are in place now, was adopted and approved by council. Some of the comments by Mr. Lambert, other comments in the community, some of the comments from council back in two thousand and fourteen or thereabouts, and again, Jim will fill in these blanks, as I'm sure some of the council members can with comments, because you served at that time. But we had about a four million dollar funding from the general fund into roads only at the time. With the adoption of the locomotive fuel tax, and also with the quarter percent on the home rule sales tax, that almost replaced that, you know, around the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen timeframe. So we are not doing any additional roadwork since that timeframe. You're going to see a ten million dollar bond, that was done in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. The general fund does continue to pay that debt service, that runs through like two thousand and twenty-three. It was a ten-year bond, so the general fund is paying about one point one million towards that ten million dollar bond, that was used for primarily roads and other infrastructure. The other thing that you've heard Public Works Director Karch mention the past was the number eight point five or eight point eight million dollars, is what it's going to take for the city to keep its head above water, ever so slightly, but above water if we make that kind of investment in our road repairs. Well, that number now is six million, that we've talked about. There's a pathway, there's, there's an explanation as to why that number changed. It's in that timeframe, in between eight point eight and now it's six million, there was a road rating strategy that changed. We found that we were being a little bit too conservative on how long our roads would last, so that's something that has occurred. And maybe that's something that's been lost over the last couple of years, and taking this opportunity again to remind the community of some of the changes, you know. Something else that occurred over the past couple of years is that sidewalks are now a component of the four point six million dollars that we're spending on asphalt and concrete in the current FY nineteen budget, and then in the proposed FY twenty budget, we have funded or plugged in five million dollars. You shave a million dollars off of that, that we are using towards a very aggressive, a very positive sidewalks program, but that leaves currently three point six, three point eight, and next year's proposed budget, it leaves four million to get to that six million dollar target that Jim Karch says that we should be at, just to keep our head above water. Again, I'm saying things that Jim's going to give more detail to, but truly, it's to emphasize some of the numbers and some of the, you know, some of the, I guess, decisions that have been made along the way, you know, so the council is on firm ground. So with that said, Jim? Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. Mayor and City Council, tonight we will be telling just a historical story, that's really all we're going to be doing, revisiting ground we've already been over, but that's important whenever we talk about issues of our infrastructure. So one of the things to start off with is our rating system. It's important to just remind ourselves that we did start that back in two thousand and eight. That was a nationally recognized pavement rating system from one to ten. And so that system, then, once we completed that in two thousand and ten, we were able to give an overall rating for our, our street infrastructure. We do that block by block, separating out the intersections, and including that in our geographic information system. What you're going to see up there is that just downward trend. It's not plummeting, but it is definitely a downward trend over the last seven years in our infrastructure, specifically associated with streets. We will talk both, as City Manager Gleason alluded to, asphalt and concrete. This includes both stories. Right now, this is a streets story, okay? So then when we talk about this, next slide is one I know we will go back to, because this is an important slide to talk about revenue trends. So this is, where have our revenues come from? And as City Manager Gleason again pointed out, and even our resident Gary Lambert said, up until fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, all revenue for the asphalt and concrete projects within the city of Bloomington were completely general fund based. They were all general fund based. It wasn't until we did the bond project, you can see, so if you see first, for the general revenue, that red, if we look at that, that red is the highlight for the general revenue funding. And then if we then shift over, when we did that large bond project in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, it was really that construction year two thousand and fourteen, that, right now, what is not shown up there, that's good for you to know, that bond repayment of one point two million dollars annually is coming out of the general fund. So that is not being paid out of the local motor fuel tax or the home rule sales tax, that's coming out of the general fund, and that'll be there until fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. So the, then, what you'll notice, the transition, just as we've been talking about, very clear. In fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, that's when we implemented the four cent locomotive fuel tax. And you're going to notice for both the quarter cent home rule sales tax and the locomotive fuel tax, the existing one, that that first year they were implemented, they're not full, you know, they weren't a fully funding system, so, so they did take one year to ramp up, and that does take about sixty days, is what we've been told, for the, the state to get us those funds to start coming in, so you'll see a little bit of a delay. And you'll also notice over time, a delay on when those funds are spent, because, you know, we are planning as a department for some of that spending to occur earlier on, so we might have missed that planning window. So, and you'll also notice at the end, the yellow, that is, there are times when we have more revenue come in that was originally anticipated, that's wonderful. We have more sales tax revenue come in, the following year, we can then put additional dollars. As you see this coming year, we're proposing additional, almost four hundred thousand dollars in our infrastructure because of additional revenues that came in. I wonder if I could just ask you a question, and I, I know the answer to the question, but I wonder, you know, from your perspective, if you could state it for the public record. What happened to our four million dollars in the general fund? Because right now, we don't have, I mean, we are putting one point two million, or whatever the debt service is, one point one, one point two million, for the street resurfacing ten-year bond. And since that was what we were using to pave our streets, we got a bond, and we got a four cent a gallon gas tax, and then we got a quarter penny on the sales tax, what happened to the four million dollars? And I was the director at the time, and then I also went back and spoke with the then-director Patty Lynn Silva, who's, you know, still working with us, and so she had talked about historically, that was when we had some very negative anticipated fund balances, and so because of that, there were some changes the elected body chose to do to fill that, and the city, city administration made those choices during that time. That didn't change our professional recommendation on needs for streets, but overall as a city, those decisions had to be made. So essentially, we didn't have to make four million dollars of tough choices? Yeah. As, as I recall, Patty had said today, if we wouldn't have had the home rooms, home rule sales tax, or the locomotive fuel tax, there would have been no money for streets. Thank you. Okay. So continuing on, the next slide, you're going to notice with asphalt and concrete, they're the same columns, they're put in the same place, they're there, we're doing this to highlight for you the fiscal year, per fiscal year, how the money that was coming out for, for, we say streets, it wasn't just that. Many people assume it's just for streets, that's why we say asphalt and concrete. You're going to see the combination of the, the concrete for the sidewalks is in red, and then the blue is where we have more of the asphalt for our streets. We just want to highlight that because many times that gets lost in the conversation. As we continue on then, we talk about another key item of change that happened. Now, back in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, there started to be five hundred thousand dollars taken out of our motor fuel tax fund. That is a state motor fuel tax fund, very important to differentiate that between the local motor fuel tax and the state motor fuel tax. We get about one point eight million dollars in state local, state motor fuel tax, and five hundred thousand dollars out of that started to go toward our street lighting expenses. Why? That was a decision made at that point, again, to try to fill that gap, administration made the, the decision to make that recommendation to council, to fill that gap using this. There were some changes with our agreements with utility companies, such that the money that we would get from the utility companies, for them being in our right-of-way, used to go to offset those street lighting costs. Those went into the general fund, and the motor fuel tax funds were used to offset those expenditures. Completely able to do that in state law. So we were able to use the state motor fuel taxes for that purpose, but that did lessen the amount of dollars we had toward our large capital projects. Ones that we've completed, like the Linden Street Bridge project, the Tuanda Barnes, Ireland Grove Road intersection project, or the upcoming projects of Hamilton Road, Bundit Commerce, Fox Creek Road Bridge, all of those projects are supplemented or paid for in their entirety with state motor fuel tax. So continuing on, the next series of slides, we're going to talk about a key statement I need to make a couple of times to you. All of the revenue that we have received for the home rule sales tax and the local motor fuel tax have gone to asphalt and concrete projects. All of the revenue from the home room, home rule sales tax and the local motor fuel tax have gone to asphalt and concrete projects. You're going to see that. That's important to, to really delineate and let you see. Okay, so this slide up here is, shows the street resurfacing, the pavement resurfacing that we've done since fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. All across the city, all across our community, we've done a lot of different projects, you can see that by year. In the same token, we have expanded and been testing and trying out our pavement preservation proj- program. We've done extensive work on that. We started that back even in 2007, we started some pilots. And again, I would just, in the, for the purpose of transparency, in 2014, we tried some bigger work on that and had some issues in April of 2014. It was, it got too oily, it got too dusty. We've then since fixed and made a lot of changes since then. So the, the lime dust that was used is now it's chips. The time of year is important, the mix is a little different. Many communities have really looked to Bloomington and are starting to do this type of treatment because it is 10 cents on the dollar, and you can really stretch the life of the pavement. When we talk about being able to lower the overall professional recommendation on an annual basis of our needs, we have to very much expand our pavement preservation program, or that is not an accurate lowering of that estimate. So as we continue on, we look at our sidewalk work. When we look at our sidewalks, again, City Manager Gleason pointed this out, this is, this is our piece of infrastructure that's on the right trajectory. We are in, this next year will be year four of a 10-year master plan that will get us as a community in the right direction. We are really making some great inroads. This is something we've talked about a lot when we always say award-winning. I just want to remind you again, in 2015, it was a management innovation award through the APWA State Chapter that was put up for federal, for the whole countrywide, out of our chapter, they recommended that master plan. Why? Because nobody out there at that point had really national ratings for sidewalks. Our staff did that totally in-house internally, so a great program. Our council currently is fully funding our sidewalk master plan. We're making great inroads on a lot of our ADA needs in the community as well. So in summary then, to close up, there's a few different comments to just focus on. Revisit one more time. Our road bond work that was done in fiscal year 2015, that's being paid currently out of the general fund. This year, you see almost $400,000, $363,000 additional. That's carryover from extra revenue this last year. So we, it's last year's revenue carried forward. We, we can't do that last minute. We already have a lot of the roads planned, so we take last year's extra revenue and apply that to this year's. And then the last one is, there, the additional money we get from the, you know, the state, the federal, those type of things, there's, there wasn't a lot of money that we were losing. We are going for grade crossing, you know, safety funds, for grade crossing funds for on the Fox Creek Road project, we're utilizing those funds. We're utilizing surface transportation urban dollars. Those are federal dollars. 80% of that going toward the Hamilton Road Bund to Commerce project. So we're utilizing and really trying to capitalize on any outside of our community grants, federal funding that we can, to get our share, to make sure that we're not losing out on some of that, on that revenue that we have. So that in totality is a summary of our overall historical picture, and so at this point, any questions that you have?
Questions of Mr. Karch. Excuse me.
I've got a quick comment, and, and we will, we'll, we'll take as long as we need to with the questions or comments, but we wanted to be as clear and as concise as we possibly could be in this presentation to council. So Jim, you did a good job, and we'll, we'll take any questions at this time.
If I could, just also to remind people, you know, for the record, obviously the council knows, and you know, and others do, but that, that there are many of our roads in our community that are state roads, much of Main Street, Veterans Parkway, Route 9, some of the, some of the roads that are in the worst condition are the responsibility of IDOT, and they are not the responsibility of the city. That doesn't mean that we throw up our hands. Obviously, we have relationships with IDOT, but there, we were talking about the city's roads, and how many hundreds of miles did that, I remember 700 miles?
We have over 800 lane miles, and we have about 360 centerline miles in our community.
Okay. 800 lane miles?
800 lane miles.
Okay, I was, I was in the ballpark, but low. Okay. I will, mayor should know that. Okay. All right. Alderman Schmidt, I saw first.
I have one question, I guess, that I want to confirm, that we are doing underground work when we're doing road resurfacing. So in, in some of our older parts of town then, it's, it's not simply resurfacing, but you've got to layer on from different funding sources to literally rebuild from the underground up.
It was about six years ago now, we've taken a block-by-block mentality. So every time we look to do resurfacing, we really try to do the best we can to televise the sewer, look at, you know, sidewalks, the signage. You are correct. We really try to take a holistic approach so that when we get done with a block, we want to be done with it for about 20 years. We really try to do everything we need to do.
I will just share some of the questions I've had from constituents, not knowing myself what the answers are. One of them has to do with whether we're setting up a competitive disadvantage because there's no indication that Normal would do the same. We don't know what the county's going to do, et cetera. I've heard suggestions that we might separate regular diesel from non unleaded gasoline, and, you know, what does that look like in terms of funding? I've heard suggestions that we have a very specific sunset around this, that we try it for a year or two years, let the public see what we're capable of doing, and, and then move it forward. And those, those are questions I'm getting. I'm sure others are getting the same, and probably more.
And it could, just, if I could just add to that, since it's appropriate, it, it could even be that it's contingent upon Normal deciding on it. Although, when we went first last time, four years ago, there was no difference in price in the four penny. We went first across the street, it was the same price, you know, as in Bloomington. But, you know, we could-
Without them having increased.
They, they didn't increase it, it was a few, maybe it was two months.
I, I'm just basing-
It was more than two months?
Okay.
Was it that long?
And I'm only basing this on, on the recent forum where, you know, all the candidates were saying, oh, no, I'd, I'd-
Yeah, no, I had the same thing. And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, to imply that in any, in the slightest criticism. It, it was just, at that time, we didn't see any difference. Of all the international political factors, economic factors that influence the price of gas, four cents, four cents on the, you know, penny gas tax. The thing, the other thing about the gas tax is, 30% of it is paid for by people who do not live in the city of Bloomington, but yet they drive on our roads, and so-
Are we talking about this, or are we talking about the next one?
No, I, I think we're talking about anything having to do with streets at this point, or questions of, yeah. But at this point, anything else you wanted to add?
No, I just wanted to share the, the questions that I'm getting, and I don't know if we have any kind of direction that, you know, we might, we might share with the public.
Okay. Thank you. Awesome. Alderman Burgess.
Thank you. And I want to start by, by saying thank you to Mr. Karch and Mr. Gleason for this presentation. I think that the way you have presented the information this evening really lends itself well to a good conversation about many of the things that we as a council and as a community need to decide to determine how to best to address street resurfacing in our community. So I really do appreciate that. First, you just mentioned that we have about 800 lane miles and 360 centerline miles. Can you explain the difference between those two?
Sure. Yeah, within our community, there are some roads with multiple lanes, you know, Oakland Avenue in different stretches, Washington in different stretches. Some of our, some of our major roads in different places have more than one lane to them. So centerline miles will be less than your, your lane miles. And so it's actually about 810 lane miles, we just round it to a nice, easy 800, so. So that is, that's hence the difference of that.
Thank you. A couple of general questions. So we've talked about the local motor fuel tax, which is currently at four cents per gallon. How much revenue is that generating on a yearly basis? I mean, I know it's there, but just to make sure I've got the numbers correct.
Yeah, 2.3 million dollars. But again, that has, as you can even look at our slide, it has, you know, it can vary. That can vary over time. So again, you can see 2.3 within two, you know, you can see up on the screen a little bit. One, one year, it was actually 2.494, you know, million dollars. So it, 2.3 is a good estimate.
Okay. And you, you said during your presentation that when it comes to home rule sales tax and local motor fuel tax, 100% of the funds generated by those taxes are going towards asphalt and concrete projects. Can you clarify that as it pertains to the home rule sales tax? Because I think it's a little more complicated than that, isn't it?
It is. So the home rule sales tax is, that one is, goes towards, so again, Finance Director Scott Rathbun can correct me, because some of that language in both the ordinance can be, can be tricky. Together, we say we are fine spending them on it. The local motor fuel tax is infrastructure, transportation infrastructure projects is how the resolution is worded. So that allows for sidewalk and street work to be done. The home rule sales tax is more specified to streets, and so that we, that funding, as long as we are not spending more on our sidewalks than the local motor fuel tax takes in, the language that we believe allows for us to do that. And so I'll turn now to, to, is that correct?
You're referring to the quarter percent of the 1% increase.
Yes, and that was the clarification I wanted. So, so we had a 1% increase in recent years to the home rule sales tax, but not all of that is going towards streets, only a quarter cent of it is.
Thank you, that is correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And you can see the revenue.
I just didn't want any confusion, I, I mean, in terms of what you meant by that, because we had allocated certain amount of that particular tax increase to other uses. So I wanted to clarify, that has not been diverted, everything is still as it, we said it was.
Correct.
Okay. And Mr. Gleason quoted a number that we're looking at something in the area of around $6 million per year in resurfacing costs to stay where we are? What does that number refer to?
Well, and again, that is a number that's indicative of not just the mill and fill. What we're talking about is also a significantly increase in our pavement preservation program. And the intent of that is to try to, as we've talked about many times before, stretch the life of our, the streets whenever you resurface them. So, you know, and the only, one of the only ways you can start gaining ground is to stretch life, like you do on a car. If you didn't do enough oil changes on a car, the car will fail sooner. Same thing with your street. By doing pavement preservation, you stretch the life of your street by doing a series of pavement preservation treatments over the life of that street. And so the intention of, of that program is to say, we are slightly declining now with that revenue at about, you know, 3.6 to 4 million dollars in that range. We are saying, you know, that based upon some of what we're seeing, that's why we are making that projection.
And that was going to be my follow-up question, and that is, how much variation here is tolerable? Because, I mean, we're looking at a very small number of years. If we continue this out over a 10-year period, would, do we, what confidence level that we would, do we have that we would continue to see a decline? Because I assume from year to year, depending on the size of projects that are conducted, there will be fluctuations in this pavement rating scale.
That absolutely could be the case. We, I don't have 100% confidence that our numbers are able to, year after year, be spot on. Again, what we're using these numbers for, these numbers come from the, a person driving the street, giving a recommend, they've been doing it for 10 years, so I feel very comfortable with the rating they give it. But then that is turned into an Excel spreadsheet that does projections. Now, it's not a, a lot of metrics that are, that are projected out there. So it is, it is a good, it is a good estimate, but it is just that. It is not definitive. So you're right, there probably are some tools out there, and that was one of the things that the council was approving for us in January, to look at some, some better software to allow us some, some better data analysis. So we are looking, we do want that. So we feel good about this estimate, but it is not, it is not, you know, we're doing the best we can with the, the data that we have.
So when we were talking about our aspirations, what is our goal for this? Is our goal a six? Is our goal a seven? Is our goal a four? I assume not. But, but what is our goal?
This is something that staff, you probably as a council, remember multiple times as a, as a city department, we have brought recommendations to you. We brought them, and that's where I actually had some sheets in the back that had, you know, a lot of different estimates. We, we used 8.5, 8.8, but I had stuff from 12, 12 million dollars a year, 10 million dollars a year, it just depended on what the question was. And because it's, are we trying to catch up? Are we trying to, what is the service level rating that we're trying to hit? As a council, we, we don't have a defined level of service set by the city council for our streets. Staff, we brought a recommendation in the past of having a tiered system. But again, that is something that is still out there. So we are basing it off of, as a, as a staff, the best we can do is base it off of a tiered system that arterial roads have a better and higher rating than do small residential roads. And we think that is a, a better way to ensure that those major roads in town have a better service level.
So, and, and I just want to clarify and make sure I understand what this chart is showing us. This is the average rating for streets in the city of Bloomington, is this six?
So what-
6.09, based on 2017 data.
What this is saying is that for the totality of square yards in the city of Bloomington, it is not differentiating between the type of street. It is the, the aggregate overall total for the, all of the square yards within the pavement of the city of Bloomington is a 6.08 rating out of 10, was on a 1 to 10 scale.
Okay.
With 10 being the best.
And, and six we're categorizing as a good rating?
Six we're categorizing as a good.
Okay. Can we go to the next slide? Because this one to me is very, very interesting, and I'll summarize where I'm going with all these randomly seeming questions in a moment. But this one's very interesting to me because there has been clearly a significant shift in our funding model for streets resurfacing. And then in and of itself, if, if, you know, there are, opinions can vary on whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, or whether we should do that or shouldn't. But what, what I would say in seeing this is I think that we need to be better as a, as a city in being transparent about these types of shifts, and be, and be more transparent to residents. So I'm really, that's why I'm really glad that this information's being presented in this way, because this is an opportunity now for us to educate our residents about where the funding is coming from and how we're funding this particular need within our community. And I think it's, I think perhaps, well, no, I'm not even going to say perhaps, I think we absolutely could have done a better job overall in being more transparent about that, because I think the problem now is, many people would say that this funding shift is not consistent with what our aspirations were. And I know I'm talking to you, this is just a general statement, this is not directed at you. And, and that's where I think that as a, as a administration and as a city council, we can and should do better in being clear about whether or not reality is matching aspirations. Because I think without a doubt, because I went back and reviewed over the weekend, the minutes from the meeting where the city council, and this is before me, so my memory's a little fuzzy, but I, I went back and looked at it. I think reading those meeting minutes, clearly the aspiration was that the $10 million bond was in addition to current funding levels. Now, that didn't happen, and I'm not saying that there is a problem that it didn't happen. Obviously, we had to deal with the financial times as they came, but I think it's important now to discuss this. And that's, that's kind of where I'm getting to with some of these questions I've been asking, is I think we as a council and we as a community need to have a broader conversation about what our expectations are. What do we want? Is, is a, is a six average, is that the level of service that is acceptable for the, for the majority of our community? And if so, how much will that cost? And it sounds like that's our best estimate, it'll cost about $6 million a year. And, and is that a level of service that we'll be satisfied with? How much will it cost? And then we need to look at, how will we pay for that? Because at, at $6 million a year, that's a very, very different conversation than if it were a larger number, like 18, 20, 25 million dollars a year. And, and so to me, it is time for us to have that broader conversation about what we want as a community and how we're going to pay for it. Because otherwise, until we do that, I think we'll risk what has happened here, where our aspirations are not matching our practices. And that, that leads to, to, you know, lost opportunities, and it leads to residents being dissatisfied with what we are doing. And that's not, I don't think what anyone on this council wants, I know it's not what staff wants. We want to provide a good, consistent level of service. So for me, after reviewing this information, I think that we need to have that broader conversation, because we, we need to come to terms with the fact that streets are a financial liability, and we need to treat them as such, and figure out what our aspirations are and how we're going to pay for it. And then I think this becomes a very simple conversation. Not easy, because these decisions are never easy, but it is simple because the data will lead us to a, to a specific conclusion possibly. But, and I would also, you know, so I, on top of that, and this is the final thing I'll say, I would further suggest that we're very fortunate that we now have a transportation commission that I know has already initiated some of these conversations in order to be an asset and an aid to council, to have this broader conversation and to bring to us what are the options and how do we move forward. So I, I simply would say that I, I think that we need to have a broader conversation. Thank you.
At this point, Alderman Mathie.
Thank you. Jim, thanks for putting this together. Personally, I wish this had gone back to 2004, because my recollection is there's a bunch of years that this would have shown, this particular chart would have shown, at least one year of $0 and a bunch of years of only spending $500,000, and it would have, I think that the perspective and the scale of what used to be versus what we've been trying used to be versus what we've been trying to accomplish last few years, helps tell a different story at the same time. So if, in your free time, you ever find the efforts to put that together, I would appreciate seeing that. I know that you've got all kinds of Minecraft to play, but, no, just kidding. So I do have a couple of questions. So, when you say 100% of the, the money was spent on the roads, does that include staff time in that? Was there, when we shifted money from general fund and we went to the other funding mechanisms, were there any staff time shifted into the funding for this portion here?
So just to clarify, I said 100% of the funds went towards asphalt and concrete, so that is, includes sidewalk programs. So those are for the, the contracts associated with that. So that does not pay for the personnel, city personnel to do that, any of that work?
That's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify, because I was asked that question today. So, thank you. One of the, just a couple of random follow-up questions, is we got an email this afternoon asking about test pavement over on Clinton Boulevard, and you said that there was a, a great story to be told there, so now, Jim, here's your time to tell us what that meant.
It is, that's, that's the lob. It really is a great story to be told, because North Clinton Boulevard, they, they paved, IDOT at the time, back in, in the day, paved it using the regular asphalt that is, was used all throughout the city, and southbound, Clinton was paved using Stone Matrix asphalt. And at the time, that was not a common mix, and still really isn't very common for IDOT to use. And it's held up exceedingly well, and over the years, the city has used, it's a different type of asphalt, it's, it's got more rock in it. And so, we actually use that now on all of our major roads. And so, the good positive story is, I was like, we agree with you, we've, we have found and held the same performance to be true, and so we've been modifying our, you know, our practices according to what we see out in the field.
Okay, thank you for that, that's a good answer. One of the things, I just wanted to make a comment, is I'm happy about the transportation committee has been making the argument consistently for narrower slash smaller lanes. I think that we've run into an issue over the last few years where we try to make wider lanes, because people feel safer in wider lanes, and then the impact of that is people go faster, because they feel safer. And so as, I think that continuing the push to keep the lane width down will help not only with speeding, but it should actually make it so that it's less expensive to maintain going forward. Sounds reasonable, right? I, I wanted to ask you about a proposal, and I think I've asked you this before as a follow-up. You, and shared a story with me that you were proposing leasing a smaller paving machine, that we could do more repairs to the streets at, on a smaller scale than having to go for full, some of the full-size lane width machines. What's going on with that, or what's the status on that?
There's not been any forward progress on that, at all. There was something that our staff had put together, it was probably a year and a half ago at this point, maybe, that there, we were trying to look at other options. Trying to find any way that we could as a community, brainstorming, throwing things out there, trying to find ways to extend and expand our dollars on street resurfacing. And so, and we had put together a package, looked at some different equipment. It really is a priority, priority, prioritization, and trying to find bodies and the needed staff to be able to, to do work in-house. And so, those are always things we're open to, we thank a lot of our folks who do the work. And so it's just, for us, though, it's always a matter of trying to find the right prioritization of our existing employees.
So if that's something that we wanted to push you on as a council, to do this, what does that look like?
It would look like just that right there, and probably, as I recall, probably the majority of, the majority of, I mean, I, City Manager Gleason, how, if they want to, if the council wants to put forth to request something of, of staff, my understanding is they have, you know, you can do, through the council request process.
I mean, do we have estimated payment number, or what that would cost?
Yes.
Because my understanding is, this would give us the ability to do, instead of doing a full lane, lane width repair on a street, we could go through a section, if like, we've got the thinner line and it's just completely torn up with potholes, we could fix a, maybe a three-foot wide section, or a four-foot wide instead of 10-foot wide.
Part of the issue that we came into before was staff. You know, there was some hesitancy to, to, you know, to add, to add full-time staff to, to look at that. But, but again, we can, we can revisit this. This is, in full transparency, not something I have talked to City Manager Gleason about. So definitely not something in a public meeting that is, is wonderful to, to, to tell your city manager about. So yes, but it's been a while. We'll have to revisit those numbers, and I'll have to owe City Manager Gleason an apology later that, for that.
Yeah, sorry to spring that one on you, Tim. But I, I just, when you, you brought it up to me, I thought it was just a really interesting concept of, of being able to have some of the machinery inside to do those smaller-scale repairs, instead of the full-scale repairs that, you know, we might only get to an area once out of every 15 years, but could we take the smaller machinery into an area and do a quick fix? You know, because right now, we're out throwing cold mix into potholes that are going to come right out the first time we have any kind of inclement weather. So, you know, those are obviously not long, good long-term fixes, it's only until we can get warmer weather to put hot mix in there. And that's still not a great one, because the plows are probably going to pull those up the first time it snows next year. So, I would be interested in more information on what that looks like, and how do we push that, that particular project forward. And with that, I think I'll stop.
Thank you, Alderman Mathie. Alderman Mill Longway.
Okay. Thank you. And hopefully I don't go into a coughing fit while I'm asking questions. But I, I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about a conversation that you and I had. This is based on a, on a question that I received, actually it wasn't a question, it was a statement, and a complaint from another resident, talking about the quality of work that's done on the roads, not necessarily from staff, but, you know, from contractors. And they said, the reason why the roads deteriorate is because the quality of the work is not good. Do you remember that conversation?
It's been a while. Actually, other, other Aldermen have asked the same question over time. And so, the quality of the work when asphalt is put down, we do have inspectors out in the field, they do have to test the asphalt before it's accepted. And so, there really are a lot of very stringent requirements that a contractor has to comply with, specifically for asphalt. Different compaction, heat requirements, haul time, there's a lot of different requirements that have to be met. And so, you know, we do feel, that's one thing I feel very comfortable with, with the, the work that is done, that our staff does, does review that and inspect that. And the, with a lot of the problems, whenever we do see them, can be their subbase issues, that's one common thing that you'll see after the fact. But a change that we have made, I'm trying to think if it's probably been about seven years, we have an engineering technician, that whenever we mill, they actually run trucks over the top of it, to see, are there soft spots? Are there areas that are going to give? So even if it looks okay, are we going to have problems once we resurface it? So we're doing more work, not just mill and fill, go right back over the top of it, we're actually going through and doing extra work, so you'll see sometimes additional deeper paving that is done, to try to really do the best we can to make sure that it lasts the longest possible.
Good, okay, thank you. And then I have a, a couple of other comments. So I, I very much agree, in terms of transparency, with this new approach that we're going to try, that City Manager Gleason has mentioned, in terms of having a website and showing, you know, where the work is being done. Because I think it will go a long way to establish that credibility. Because one of the, what makes me a little bit uneasy about, you know, this motor fuel tax, or this additional one, is the fact that I'm worried that next year, people will see similar things. You know, they'll see potholes, you know, and oftentimes, people travel the same path. And if all they see is potholes, they're going to assume that the work is not getting done. So I, you know, I, I'm really curious how we're going to manage people's expectations in that regard. Any, anything you can offer in terms of that?
That is a tough one, because in the reality, even, no matter, there's, there's enough roads that we have to keep up with. And as, as the mayor alluded to, there's a lot of state routes, too, that the city gets blamed for, to which there are extensive potholes, and it, for the work that we would take for the larger, the larger work needed to get done, it, it takes a lot of effort, and that's not a one-year project. We have been, for quite a number of years, underspending on our, on our street infrastructure specifically. And so we have to catch, we have to catch back up, and so we're trying to just not get worse at this point.
Mr. Gleason, did you want to add anything to that?
As far as the comments and what we're going to do-
The awareness of the public.
One thing you'll see in November, at the committee, the whole meeting, every year we're going to do an asphalt and concrete season wrap-up, where we're talking about the projects that have been completed, you know, even potentially recognize the companies that have assisted, you know, bid on the contracts. But as far as during the construction season, we're going to have a link on the website that's going to have tons of pictures, this is what it looked like in June, this is now what it looks like in July, and have even considered signage, you know, saying that this is your locomotor fuel tax dollars at work. So we're going to take every opportunity to tell our story better than what we've done in the past.
Thank you.
Okay, good. And then, let me see. So, another issue, and I think that's going to come up later as well, when Scott does his presentation, is about the fund balance, I think it's been alluded to. And, you know, some people had made the comment to me that, why don't we just use part of it, you know, of the surplus, to, to at least try to get back to where we were before. It may not be just this one year, I mean, this particular year, but, you know, slowly but surely. I, I, you know, I tend to think that that would go a long way, you know, it could even be $300,000, $400,000, $500,000, whenever we can, you know. But I think that would go a long way in trying to, to reestablish that credibility, and doing the right thing, if we initially said that this was what we were going to do, regardless of the tough times that we faced back then. So, those are my few comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Actually, I'm going to ask Alderman Bray, did you have any questions or comments before I move to Alderman Black?
Well, I do, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you very well, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It's a little broken on my end, as I speak to you, but I'll just press on with my question. I'll start off with the fact that streets and pavements are a part of our basic infrastructure, and everyone benefits from good streets and pavements, regardless of whether they drive or they use motor fuel. So my question relates to the fact that we know that gasoline consumption may be falling in the future due to the emergence of fully electric and more hybrid vehicles. So has there been a study or a proposal of funding sources that represent capturing the electric vehicles and hybrid vehicle market?
At this point, staff is not, Alderman Bray, at this point, staff is not aware of studies out there to this effect. I, I had done a master's program, and one of them was looking at some of these different types of user fee-based systems, and so, and so this was one to where a lot of people are talking about it, and there might be some studies at this point on it, but more mile-based, you know, you know, use taxes. But again, at this point, I'm not aware of any actively.
But that, just, just as an FYI, Alderman Bray, that did come up, and Alderman Mathie was with us, if he recalls any of that, that did come up in our One Voice trip to Washington. At least just the inadequacy of the current formula of the motor, the federal motor fuel tax. And so there probably are, but nobody cited any, as I recall. I'm sorry, Alderman Bray, you still have the floor?
Thank you for that, yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, thank you for that, Mayor, because I think we're going to have to look toward the future and realize that our funding sourcing may become antiquated as our vehicles move in another direction. And so I appreciate this idea that there's either a user fee or a mileage fee, and that may be the way to study this or view this in the future.
Yeah, absolutely.
So thank you.
And I think that that's, yeah, thank you very much, that's an excellent point. You still have the floor.
That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Black.
Thank you, and thank you, Jim. So, I guess, I'm taking a trip down memory lane, no pun intended, on this and this conversation, and then other conversations, and Alderman Bray's comments are spot on, and are kind of along the same thoughts that I have this evening. You know, I remember being on the county board in the transportation committee, and they were, this would have been, God, 10 years ago now, talking about how the state was looking into, at that point in time, putting GPS devices in everybody's car, and then was going to bill everybody based on their mile and what kind of car they drove. Now, that hasn't come to pass, but I don't think that probably is too far away. Because I, I don't want to get too far down the rabbit hole on motor fuel tax, but fuel economy is rising, which means that these revenues are going to fall. And it goes back to kind of, we had a conversation a couple months ago about telecom tax, and how fewer people have landlines. And we're going to be facing, we're going to be sitting here, five years from now, six years from now, some point down the road, trying to come up with a way to fund streets, because our formula is fundamentally flawed. So it's difficult for me, because I remember this as part of the conversation in 2014, and I, the naivety I had at the time was that $10 million was going to make the biggest splash and do a lot, but I mean, it, it really didn't. You know, we can look at the numbers here and how we've, we've paid for it, and I'm proud that we've increased our funding. I mean, Jamie's right, we, if we pulled this back a couple more years, you would see some very poor numbers that were there, and those are some policy choices that, that we had to face. And, and we spent a lot of time rating the, the streets. You know, when I, if you go back to that slide with, Jim, if you don't mind, with the, the ratings, that one, yeah. I mean, this graph doesn't really tell me a whole lot, it, it just, it's really zoomed in. What I would find to be more interesting is if this were not just the average of the square yardage of the city, but for key areas. So I think of like our historic core, and what the street ratings are in the historic core, versus say, some of the other parts of our community. We have chronically underfunded some of our older streets and neighborhoods, and I think that, that's a policy choice that we have made as a group. So we have to live with those consequences. I guess, from, from where I sit with this conversation, you know, whether it be an extra 2.7, 4 million, 10 million, whatever the number is, I, I'm not sure that it's ever going to make the splash that I think the public would really like. And to Amelia's point, the expectations and, of what people think that they're going to get versus what they may get are, that could be misaligned. So, I don't know what value I added in the conversation, other than to say that this is a tough one, because there's never, there will never be enough funding to streets. And I think to myself, that nobody goes into a community and says, wow, they have the best streets ever, I want to move there. But conversely, they, if, if the streets are terrible, that becomes, that's a clear message to, to, to a potential visitor. So, we have to strike some balance. If I'm looking at my crystal ball, I would imagine fewer people on the roads, in the next 10 to 15 years, you're going to see more subscription services for vehicles, autonomous vehicles are going to have an impact in some way, shape, or form, whether it hits Bloomington in the short term or the long term, it's going to hit us. And even the way that we drive now versus we did 10 years ago, versus 20 years ago is way different. And, and from where I sit, you know, I know that the stat that a third of the people who pay the motor fuel tax don't live in the community, which is great. But there are people that, that leaves two-thirds that do. And, and I, I have a hard time buying into the idea that, that somebody who's driving a small, fuel-efficient vehicle is paying the same as someone who's driving, you know, a gas guzzling, and I'll pick on Hummers, a Hummer. So, again, the model is flawed, you know, it, it's kind of the hand we were dealt. But in my world, we would do something a little different, like maybe a vehicle registration, where if your car weighs more, you put more wear and tear on the roads, you pay more. Like, it's very much similar to the idea that we do with, with water, where if you have a more expen, if you use more water, you pay more. You know, my Mazda isn't tearing up the roads as much as someone's F-150. And that, that makes sense to me, so. But then again, we'll be revisiting this again, because the streets are going to continue to need maintenance, they're going to continue to need funding, and we're going to have fewer people on the roads paying them, because fewer people are going to have cars. So, this is, this is a tough one. But this data here is very helpful, it tells a, an, an interesting policy narrative that we've, we've, we've made over the years, and I think that we're at a crossroads. And again, I've mentioned this before, I always love when we have election timeframe, because this is where I want to hear the candidates, and they say, we need to take a hard look at the budget. I don't know what the hell that means, because here we are taking a hard look at the budget, and I'd be interested to hear what feedback our potential future new colleagues may have.
Thank you very much. And just, just generally speaking, though, you, you will find a cor, except for the electric cars, you will find a correlation. The guy with the, the F-150 is paying more than you are paying, because they're buying more gas, but it's not a perfect correlation. The other thing, in terms of misalignment, in terms of how bad our streets are, I just found out last week, not only do I need four new tires and an alignment, but one of my wheels is smashed- wheels is smashed on my car that's not even three years old, or not smashed, it's, it's all misaligned.
One might wonder-
And every time I hit a pothole, I say, that damn mayor-
Yeah, I was gonna say, one might wonder who's driving that vehicle that's causing that sort of damage, I don't know. I don't know.
I didn't say that, but I'm neither confirming nor denying that either. Other comments on this? Okay. Thank you all very much, and we're gonna move right along to our next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is another FY20 update. Scott Rathbun, if you would, work your way to the podium. A couple of things that staff was directed to show. We talked about some of the staff action that was taken that saved some money for the proposed FY20 budget. And what we'll see, while it's a small number in comparison to the larger all-funds budget, it really made a significant impact on what we are calling the one-and-done projects, and Scott will talk about that as well. Something else about the cash reserve funding levels that we are at. Scott's gonna further elaborate on something that truly is a policy decision for the council. While our funding levels right now are about $20, $21 million that we project, we, it also becomes a rating discussion as well, and the better the rating that you have and you hit those targets, the more you save on money when you bond for future projects. So, it's one, I'm not suggesting that there's a right or wrong answer, it's just one that needs to come before council, and we're gonna take the opportunity to sort of share information that maybe has not been discussed before. Scott?
Same slide that we've had up previously, you've seen it before. I just wanted to kind of run through, you know, what the expectations are coming down the road next month for the, the adopted. We'll be pretty much going through the same presentation, and we'll just show the variances between the proposed and the adopted. And one of the ones I just kind of wanted to give you a heads-up on, it's a good example of, of an activity or a reorg, or however you wanna frame it, that can gross up a budget, but we're, we're not gonna be looking for new dollars, and that's, we'll be moving the billing department from the Water Division, the utility billing department. That's been planned to come to the general fund and be under finance, we moved the cashiers last year. We had some things to work out, and we worked those out with Public Works, so we've kind of accelerated the timeline on that. So, between the proposed and the adopted, we're gonna move that billing department into the general fund, but we're gonna charge the enterprise funds back the same exact amount, but that's going to increase our general fund budget by about $800,000. So, just that kind of activity, we may have a couple of capital projects that were planned for this year that need to roll, bids didn't come in on time. Once again, no need for, for additional funds, but just giving the idea of what might change between proposed and adopted, same things occurred last year, no new dollars needed. Addressing some of the questions that came up, or comments that came up, the City Manager Gleason commented, during the proposed, one of the ones was related to department reductions. Just from a very high level, you know, the, the process we go through for the budget, the departments, they produce their own detailed budgets. They load them in the system, and then finance takes over, and we do the review. We compare those to prior-year actual, prior-year budget, in some cases, we, we review those to the four-year average. We're looking for variances, we're asking questions, then we balance. Well, we put in the revenue, revenue projections, then we balance the entire budget, and we see how much money we have or how much money we need. Fortunately, this year, we had money left over. I, I look back and, and think about some of the terminology I used in, in calling the money that was left over the surplus, and that we had surplus available for capital projects. Projects are a necessary part of every budget year, so I, I'd almost like to walk that one back and not use that term, but after we go through that process, we have a certain amount of money left, hopefully, and we can apply that to capital projects. So, we have facility needs, we have some projects that have grant funding, we have the streets, I commented on the sentence up there. This, the dollar amount for the one-and-done projects that are not related to facilities, streets, or those funded by grants, was $535,000 in this budget so far. We attained 32% of that by just going back to departments one more time before we finalized and said, can you review, review your budgets, one more layer of due diligence? I mean, last year, we went after them for $2 million in reductions. So, their starting point prior year to this year was, I think, pretty lean already, and we asked them to voluntarily come back so that we could do additional projects. They came back $172,000, which is 32% of the one-and-done projects. It gave you an idea of some of the categories there. The top three, if you're interested departmentally, not, not that there was a contest or anything, but, I mean, these are some of the larger budgets too, so fire, police, and IS. Fire came in at $70,000, police 35, IS 45. You know, looking through their budgets, going through in great detail, seeing what, you know, they could offload in, in terms of consulting, what can we do internally, that's, that's the kind of effort that the departments do. Another category, we had a question on last time, made, we've made a big deal of attempting to transition away from using the capital equipment lease. It was a necessity a few years ago, when, when cash was tight. As we've been talking about, you know, fund balances are improving. Fortunately, revenues are, we're optimistic about those, cautiously optimistic. So, this year, we targeted $1.9 million for cash for equipment instead of capital lease. Our, our rate was a little under 4% for the last lease we did, but I use 4% as an example here. So, just applying that to the 1.9 million, $70,000 in interest savings just for the first year on an assumed capital lease, that'd be $200,000 over the life, life of the lease. On an average of $5 million for annual capital equipment lease, if we can get it away from using that lease, if we can do cash for capital, cash for equipment, that's a half-million dollars in interest savings over the life of the lease. So, those are significant dollars. As a segue into the next slide about fund balance, one of the things I've mentioned previously related to the surplus that we're projecting for 2019, and potentially some of the surplus that we had left over from 2018, at the end of the year, we could, you know, potentially look at that surplus, the fund balance, and maybe we apply some of that to the equipment we purchased during 2019, 'cause we do the lease in arrears. We, we don't do the lease ahead of time, because we might borrow more money than what we need, so we buy the equipment, we fund it ourselves, and then, you know, later in the summer, we'll review all the equipment that we purchased during 2019, and that's when we'll execute the capital lease, we do it after the fact. So, that actually provides us an opportunity to look at that surplus, the fund balance, and potentially go back and just transition or redo those entries and just expense those equipment items instead of applying them to the lease. Just some information on the fund balance. Not advocating one way or the other, as far as like the, the target away from our, our policy at this time, but just some information related to levels and medians and averages. According to a Moody's report, it's, it's a little dated, but it's, it showed that double-A municipalities have fund balance of 21%. Apparently, the city has a rating of, of double-A. Our proposed budget fund balance is 20.8 million, it's 19.6%. So, we're slightly under that median. Triple-A municipalities have fund balance of 25%. I, I was asked by Mboka today, and it was a great question, what, what would that potential difference be between a double-A rating and a triple-A rating as far as interest rates on our borrowing? According to our financial advisor, that it'd be 20 to 30 basis points. So, I applied that to a 50 million, right now, we have $65 million in outstanding debt, that includes interest and principal, so I just applied it to $50 million. It's not a huge number, but it's $125,000 a year that you would save in interest over a 10-year bond, 20-year bond, you guys can do the math on that one. Just, these other ones are just kind of reciting some of the commonly-held conceptions about fund balance. The reserve policy should be considered a minimum target. We may want to revisit our, our fund balance policy. GFOA recommends two months reserves, two, two months divided by 12, that's closer to 17% on average. Fund balance for best practices should be reserved for use in emergency situations, one-time needs such as one-and-done capital projects. I like to think of it as being available for one-time corrections, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna call, move it away from the capital lease, a correction. There's a lot of discussion about sick leave buyback now, and, and correcting how we do that, well, the potential, we may have a cash need with that, if, if we have a lot of people taking early retirement, so our fund balance could be used to correct that situation as well. So, that's, that's one, one of the reasons we've gotta really, you know, kind of hold that fund balance tight. It's, it is savings for the city, you never know what may happen, a tornado, et cetera, but it is there, it's available to be used, it just needs to be used wisely.
Just if I could grab you, would we, if we, let's, so, just in terms of comparative perspective, we're really not, our, our fund balance is healthy, but it's not necessarily unusual. It's not way above average, nowhere near where 25% would be for a triple-A city.
Correct.
And, how, if we used a few hundred thousand dollars, I think, as Alderman Mboka had suggested, I'm just, I, I maybe even say a few hundred thousand, but whatever, if we put some of our, some money toward streets, would we be dinged by the agencies, by Standard and Poor's or Moody's?
Well, my understanding-
You mean, 'cause that would be, that's an ongoing need, right? So, we're kind of doing it for, it's, it's not exactly operating, but it's sort of operating costs?
Well, we, I would have to say, we're using it to kind of increase what, what our average has been, so I, I don't think, I don't think they would ding us for that. It's not like we're-
A, a one-time?
Yeah, we're not filling a, an operating hole, a recurring operating hole by using our fund balance, we're trying to increase temporarily, we could always go back to what we've been doing, you know, the $4.6 million per year. So, you know, these are just assumptions of mine, but I, I don't think they would review that negatively.
Mm-hmm.
They don't like you to use it for, you know-
Right.
Making payroll, right?
Yeah. Right. Thank you. Alderman Black?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Scott. To that point, this conversation made me think, I, I hear Normal talking a lot about their triple-A bond rating, and I just did a quick Google search here on what their fund reserve is, and it's showing me at about 15%. So, that's more, and they have a higher rating even though they're not at 25%, so I don't think that would be as impactful as we might think.
And, and that is fair enough, that, that's just a median. There's, I mean, if you ask the rating agencies or the financial advisors, you know, and I was asked this question before, how do we go from double-A to triple-A? Well, I was sent a volume worth of information, you know, how to do that. You know, your, your tax revenues, the potential for growth, you know, all of that, that's taken into account, not just how well you balance your budget every year. So, for Normal, you know, if they have more potential for tax revenues with what they're doing downtown, that weighs into it.
Well, and, and their debt, I mean, their debt load is substantially higher than, than us, their debt load is higher, their reserves are lower, they have a higher bond rating because of what they got into debt for. You know, you get into debt, if you get into debt for payroll-
I'm not interested in calling, I'm not interested in calling Normal out on their, some of their financial choices, but it, it just kind of is part of this conversation.
Certainly.
And, and just from where I sit, I, I don't see any benefit of moving from a double-A to a triple-A from, from where we sit.
You know, if you're an investor, you really don't wanna put money into a triple-A city, 'cause you're gonna get less money. You, you go for the double-A's or those that are, that are, you're gonna get your cash, right? Anyway, again, it's not like a business, but other questions, Alderman Mathie?
Scott, I had a question of, you know, I know every year that we are doing something with the money, I mean, what, what strategies are we doing with the fund balance to, are we investing in T-bills, or is it in a savings account? I mean, where are we at on that? What expectations of return are we getting on that $20 million?
Yeah, a lot of it is in CDs, to be honest. I mean, we, we go with some very conservative investments, so right now, we're, you know, 2.5 to 2.6% on average.
Okay. Is that something worth looking at? I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we're going to invest it at the riverboat or anything, but, I mean, is there something worth looking at that we might have, be able to take a more aggressive investment strategy? You know, I'm, we're never gonna get 7%, but is there something we could do where we could get 3% or 3.5% or something? You know, a lot of the foundations that I've done work for go for very conservative investigations, or invest, investments as well, and they're shooting for 3.5% to 4% as their conservative target number. So, is there, is there something we can spend some time to look at, and, 'cause that could make a significant difference as well?
Right. Yeah, I'd like to, to kind of formalize that and bring it back to council.
Okay. Other questions? Alderman Bray?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Well, I was listening carefully to the, to the projection of how there could be savings of one, over 10 years of, I think I heard 1.5 million saved over 10 years by having, going from a double-A to a triple-A rating, was that a thought?
That's correct.
So, I, I would be interested in having some further discussion about whether or not that is a desired goal, because I'm also hearing that when we have a better rating, that we can take out debt at a lower rate, we can achieve a lower loan rate if, if we wanted to do any capital projects. So, that, that seems to me that would also be a reason that we would want to go from a double-A to a triple-A rating. So, I'd just like to have more conversation, probably not today, but in the future, about the pluses and minuses of setting a goal for a triple-A rated city.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else? I'm gonna turn to my city manager. Anything else you need from the council on these kinds of things as we move toward next week?
No, I don't think so. We, you know, we're ready for a projected April 8th adoption of the FY20 budget. On March 25th, next week, are we walking through FY20 one more time? And, and I didn't think so, I just didn't recall. So, Mayor, no, I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. At this point, we'll go to the city manager's report, and thank you, Mr. Rathbun. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And actually, thank you for the time to present both those presentations. You know, we're, we're just trying to get the information out, be as transparent as we possibly can, trying to communicate in a way that it's very clear and concise, and, you know, if there's a deeper dive or a question that's asked, we can always do that. So, very much appreciate the time that was given to us tonight. Scott, did we have any updates? Okay. And what I do have is for the March 25th agenda, the upcoming items, Mike Metecca, here we go. Mike Metecca is going to present, as he has with McLean County and also the town of Normal, not-in-our-town annual report. Also, a couple of proposed agenda items is a third-party vendor that would provide risk management and workers' comp contract will come before city. It's a three-year contract with a one-year out if we're not satisfied. It would be a change in who we currently have and have had for several years, but we see HR's done a good job of researching this company, seen increase in service and reduction in cost. So, that'll be an agenda item. Two additional will be the video gaming fees as a March 25th agenda item, and then also the locomotor fuel tax as an agenda item. And what I will say is this, this would still not be on the, I guess, horizon, if you will, if I did not feel that there was majority council support for both. But if something happens over the next couple of days, while that was not the intent of the presentation on the asphalt and concrete, but if something would change, and, and I get a sense that we do not have a majority vote, we're not gonna bring it forward as an agenda item. Don't see the need to do that, but it has advanced up to this, this point for, for the reason that I believe that there is support on both items. Other than that, I have nothing else, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Whoops. At this point is, oh, wow, we're only two minutes over budget in terms of the time. the time, and actually, I think that's a little fast. So, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Moved by, uh, several people, uh, moved by Alderman Black, second by Alderman Schmidt. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And thank you, Alderman Bray.
Thank you all, appreciate it.